Tommy's going to the.
Yeah, Tommy. He's telling you the most important.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, if I'm a little bit.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. Uh, before we head home tonight, let's get approval to proceed on to the sixty-five percent uh plans of the EMA nine on that circuit. Uh, as you have in front of you there is a program board. Uh, wants to have approval to give the heart care to authorize to proceed on sixty-five percent. Since they stood sixty-five percent, we've got through the same process and have approved the going through construction. Right now, we're on time, on schedule, on budget.
A lot of work.
Right now.
Anybody got questions or comments about this at this time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank God.
Appreciate it. Mr. Sherwood, you're living with the five candidates, community corrections, and the evening is here.
Good evening. How are you all this evening?
Good, very good.
Doing great. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with y'all again. When I first met with y'all back in twenty eighteen, I think it was maybe twenty nineteen, I told y'all that I'd come about once a year, but then COVID sort of hit us. So I haven't seen y'all around. But I wanted to give an update on sort of what's going on with us, on how we're progressing, what we're doing in the community. Um, in twenty nineteen, it was the first year we were fully operational with community corrections in Pike County. And during that year, we had seventy-one cases. That seventy-one individuals in this community that rather than going to prison, they received help. Typically, we send about sixty to seventy percent of our clients to long-term prison. They have told y'all that can cost anywhere from a thousand dollars to get in. And then a lot of times, we have to do a mental health evaluation in the beginning. We work with a psychiatrist that gives us a really great rate of seventy-five dollars to loan. They prescribe meds that typically are generic, so they try to keep their medication costs down between twenty-five and fifty dollars a month, so that once they've completed our program, they can continue that medication assistance for themselves. Um, so we had seventy-one cases in twenty nineteen. And twenty twenty, even with COVID, we had sixty cases. And so far, in twenty twenty-one, we have forty-nine cases. We currently have active sixty-four cases in Pike County. The majority of our clients are drug and alcohol cases. And that requires the extensive case management assistance. So it gets to be expensive. And I told you I didn't ask for money. And I kind of lied, but I'm not here to ask for money. I am here to ask for a little bit of assistance if you're able to provide it. Um, we are currently renting an office space that's over a little over a thousand dollars a month for us. To me, that's twelve more people I could put into treatment in one year. So I'm going to ask if you possibly have two little offices left anywhere in all of your rearranging when you are able to move and continue rebuilding. We could certainly use that and welcome that opportunity to free up those assets to provide more and better services for Pike County. So just keep us in mind, and I'll start rescheduling and reshuffling everyone around. Uh, two small offices would be perfect for us, and we would appreciate that very much. Do you have any questions for me or any comments?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that, babe. Mr. Charles Salt.
Oh, excuse me. I forgot to introduce. Ms. Holly Lee is your person here in Pike County.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Holly. Come on, Ms. Charles.
Thank you very much.
So I have a little bit of time here. You got about three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They can borrow some time if you want.
Just a good chance.
First of all, my first question is, has the advantage of the commission, any director that's been given out to the citizens of County Road sixty-six as community fix?
Russell, do we have anything on eleven sixty-six?
Yeah, it's uh, a little over half of it is approved on your uh public uh road building, road and bridge fund.
The recircum project with?
Yes, it's been posted on your website for a while now, sir.
Good.
You approved that, I think, back in March of this year, if that is.
So, yes, sir, we have approved to get that road, have that road thing just.
Uh, from my understanding, that half of it, which was considered according to the information that I received thirteen, that would be three point eight miles, which would extend up to County Road eleven fifty-six. And the constituency I talked to indicated that they would like to have the entire road as it has been with thirty-three sixteen, which is a road that runs from the Walmart distribution center to Spring Hill, Patrick and Billy's Blue Road, excellent road. Our road is the worst road in Pike County by millions whatsoever. I've lived there for seventeen years. And it's a safety hazard, and we succeed here in this. Give me a minute. Road looks like this over here at eleven sixty-five and eleven sixty-six. Okay. Uh, if you look here, this is the new since the start of the year. This road is thorough. And the fact that the ditch here in the county is responsible for the easement or what is the right way here, this ditch is about ten feet deep. And if anybody wants to go, it's going to be a catastrophe. I'd like for the council of the commission to know that this is a hazard here, okay? The other thing here is that, most importantly, I know that they can have it wide because it's state standard, okay? But if you notice here, uh, eleven sixty-five is the town, Commissioner Johnson lives on, it's ten feet wide. And we need everybody to know that now.
I actually live on eleven twenty-eight.
Okay, we're all good. Thank you, everyone. It's all right by now. All right, but anyway, this road is eleven sixty-five is ten feet wide. And if you look at the picture here, okay, real notice that this wood we prepared all the way down and increased the weight and a half feet to ten feet, okay? So this is a twenty-foot road, which makes it safer than eleven sixty-six. All right, so we got a safety problem for students, for people. And we also have the fact that, when we consider uh preparing half a road, which, in my recognition, would be a tragedy for the rest of the system and some roads, all right? We have the money, we got six things, tax on gas, we have other ones which comes from make it America Great Again. And we should do the entire road, and we should do it at ten feet only sign to make it safer for everyone. The other side here is that when we had Commissioner Carpenter, he was forty. We had two signs put up at forty-five miles per hour. They were put up at the request by Mr. Carpenter, and those signs were removed. Those signs, which used to have been forty-five miles an hour from eleven sixty-five to eleven seventy-four, which is the dense part of the community where most of the kids play. And we have a freeway. And that's a hazard. I want the commission to know that that hazard for our community, for the kids that live there, bus drivers, the bad roads. So if you want to look at this, I'm going to leave this with the commission. All of these pictures I have copies. I'll leave this here, and I'd like to the responsible commission to leave as a seventeen year resident on this road, which is the worst road I ever lived on. And I did this and put the hand.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Just standing there. Hand on the table, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Duncan.
We, uh, Miss Salt, and I have the engineer in McKenzie just pulled minutes from earlier this year. We approved this as a commission on March eight, you know, prior to anybody out in the community saying anything. I knew this road needed attention, and we voted on having it done. When we started bidding projects out this year, everything with the way inflation has hit this year, we've had projects anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five percent over budget. The road departments had a bridge issue that was so high over budget that we couldn't even award the low bid without going back to the state and working with them on. We did not pull the minutes, and when we went back and approved the twenty-twenty-two, I can't tell you which meeting that was, but we as a commission did vote that we wouldn't start any new projects in twenty-twenty-two without finishing the things that weren't done. And we had that talk, and I had to get you to pull the minutes. Oliver, you get any of those notes from you when we talked about rolling over the twenty-one projects into twenty-two before adding new stuff?
Uh, I don't, but I think it would have been August, W deadline to approve your CDP for next year.
But when we looked at the, well, no one will step back to say, four years ago, five years ago now, when I got on the commission and we started working on the roads, the Pike County was a hundred and thirty-six year paving cycle. That once every hundred and thirty, twenty-six years, the roads in the county would get paved. And as of a year and a half ago is when we got on down and took a pack with a twenty-one plan we did about four years ago and a fifteen year infrastructure plan we did a year and a half ago, we're on thirty-six year paving cycle now. So in the past five years, we have restructured the finances of the county and shortened up the paving cycle a hundred years. But when things are that far gone, none of it's done quick enough. And I understand that. I understand y'all's frustration. When we sat down, when I sat down with the engineer and looked at eleven sixty-six, the cost of going from Good Hope to Ansley, which is the entire length of the road, was going to be so extravagant, it would have put it off for several years. So he and I went out, wrote the road, and agreed that the worst section of it was from Good Hope to the Indian Creek, eleven oh fifty-six intersection. And that's, that was, that part, we felt like would work in a normal year where we're trying to get road work done across six districts. And we had a couple of projects that we had to do on longer roads that were multi-year basis, and that was one we tried to go from Good Hope Road to get the Indian Creek intersection. Um, myself and the two commissioners to my right, we're on a committee right now, working with grant money, looking that through the sort of relief stuff, and we're working through that. And one of our priorities is taking those funds and using them in ways that will allow us to free up other money to catch back up with the twenty-one and twenty-two paving cycle, which is the way inflation's hit. And we're, we're working on this harder now and advancing this more this year, and we'll keep y'all in communication when we get this done. But it is, how many roads did we roll over? Do you remember? Which of the Line Jack, Road, this road, yes?
Well, pretty really you can count both sections of the Line Jack Road as one road.
So there's the two sections of Line Jack and this road are the ones that we rolled over. But I, we will keep in kind of view as we get some resolved time, we'll roll this over into twenty-two. But we did vote as a group in August that anything undone, and this year, due to the over budget cost that we saw, we would not pick up any project in twenty-two until we called up the twenty-one projects. And that's, that's our plan.
Anything else? Mr. Carter?
He, he asked a couple of engineers basically questions. Probably a guy who left Oliver answering real quick. I don't want to speak on that one, but would you ask others real quick?
Go ahead, Phil, let me know if you have any. Your name? So what, what was the question? I'm going to refresh my memory.
One was a forty-five, I missed one, I don't know. The one was forty-five, um, mile per hour speed limit, which I know still in effect, discussing signs, because there was a question about signs and speed limit. And then the other one was road width.
The difference in eleven sixty-five to eleven sixty-six?
So speed limit first, the statutory speed limit in Alabama, on all two lane and paved county roads is forty-five miles per hour, unless otherwise posted. So we traditionally, we have not and we do not normally post statutory speed limit, because any driver on our roads is responsible for knowing that that speed limit is forty-five miles per hour unless they see something different posted. So I don't know why those signs were put there. You mentioned that Commissioner, former Commissioner David Carpenter, I think you said, had them put there? That was before my time as county engineer, so I don't know anything about that. My guess, I don't, don't think we would have removed them, so I'll guess that those signs were stolen by somebody.
I can imagine us removing the sign, won't we?
Now, we would, we would not take that sign down unless the county commission approved a different speed zone there. That has not happened.
Yeah, they've been on that list.
Yes, sir, sweet.
I go to the road department and ask them what happened to the sign. They told me that they could have been removed by some person in the community, but they didn't know. I said, well, if Commissioner Carpenter, uh, had them installed, could they be replaced? He told me that, indicated to me that it was not replaced. And I also asked him at the same time, Mr. Carpenter, I had the thirty-five mile per hour speed sign posted in front of New Hope, New Hope Baptist Church. I said, well, are you going to remove that sign? He said, no way. So I didn't really get a good response from the road department as a result of that conversation.
And I'll answer the other question I'm thinking with. We have various specific design standards in the state for pavement widths and other attributes of road projects as well. And that's typically based on traffic counts. So we will, um, whenever we do recircum this road, it will be recircum in accordance with design standards. And that includes lane widths or any other attribute.
To your knowledge, is there a difference in eleven sixty-five and eleven sixty-six as far as a minor collector, major collector thing? Just a.
Memory, sir, I think, I think they're both minor collector. Um, but eleven sixty-five, I think, does have a higher traffic count. I don't have that information with me. But, you know, the, I don't know why that lane showed it, but that was recircum for many years before I was at the mill. So, um, I wasn't around. I wasn't working in the mechanics or anything to service. So I can't speak to that point. It was done that way. But of course, um, the lanes on eleven sixty-six are really, on average, neck and more narrow than they were when they were new, because of edge rattling, you know, edge failures. And the road really isn't in poor condition to pave it. So, um, that's one, that's one issue that probably makes the road seem more narrow as you get older.
And as to his question, when we come back and actually get the road fixed, it will be back at the standard set by the state as probably ten foot for length.
It'd be, I mean, it's most likely it's going to be nine foot length.
Nine, nine yards for the road, that traffic count.
Okay.
It will be down in accordance with the design standards. Yes.
I got a question. Little signs we're talking about, was the pole still there? Just the signs taken off?
The poles, the posts and the signs were clearly removed. They were put in place with standard S O P. And they were removed. Okay.
Somebody had to take them up, cause their business can't pick their road up.
Adders against it all to do it.
Yeah. But they got to get top two and stuff.
I got a question for you. You know how long ago, because I remember seeing the signs a while back, prior to, um, the pandemic. So do you know how long ago the sign was? Because I didn't see them. So I know, I know exactly which ones you're talking about.
Yes, the sign was, the initial sign moving west was posted in front of the trailer house, which is directly from the new trailer house, which is directly across from Henderson property. Okay, the sign that was posted from the west side was posted after eleven seventy-four going east before you get to the first house, the initial first house on the right hand side.
Yes, sir. I remember, I remember seeing them. I just wanted to know how long they been missing. That's about it.
You know, I, I can't say, uh, Mr. Carpenter, uh, passed away, I want to go back to the book.
He, twenty years ago?
No, not twenty years.
Did he trade books?
I think it's seventeen.
Yeah, as it is.
It'd be, it'd be fifteen.
Yeah, there've been two commissioners between Mr. Carter and Thorizier.
We're safe. Don't stay. Yeah, five or six.
Yeah. Yeah. But anyway.
We, we need those signs. We need the community need those signs from eleven sixty-five to eleven seventy-four. We do not have the, uh, the children's density from eleven seventy-four to Anderson that you have from eleven sixty-five to eleven seventy-four. And that's a tragedy. We have people coming through there at eleven sixty-five, and that is our, our every day.
I'll give the engineer to that tonight, and we'll, we'll work on getting that answered. And I'll talk to the trufer to say, if you're seeing speeds like that, they regularly work in the higher gates of the parts of Shellhorn Road, at Addink Ocean with the same staff, and I can deal with that tonight as well.
Just the one, uh, we had one street through the sticks where it went from New Hope Baptist Church to a food shop, and he was just sitting there. Now, the only time I see you in my years, I would regularly report your fashion, and all I do unfortunately is discussion. And they do.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate the video. Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right. Under due business, first we have the, uh, once the project update, then the city point out there, and answering questions as well. In fact, um, next we have personnel. You'll look in, in your agenda package, you know, from last week, there is a memo for uh, probationary, in LA, for this Williams probation. And, uh, so the, the, this is sort of retroactive, so the memo is requesting that you approve permanent status, um, effective October fourteenth. So this is kind of a retroactive thing. One of the letters that, or one of the items that I handed out to you is a letter of resignation for this same individual. Now resigning. So I talked to McKenzie, and the perfect way to handle it is to approve, like, you know, and I said, approve it, retroact, and approve the status, and then approve the resignation.
Can we all, if you want, listen to that?
And we will, and we did hand out another personnel request, and that's just to have it out, I thought, I would be present, but we didn't have. And so I would, in the remainder of the meeting, I would ask them to suspend this and approve that request. If possible. And then the, and third item under due business is the, under equipment, we have a proposal from the auction company for the next spring auction to sell the tracks on dump trucks. Of course, these, these items have not been surplus yet, but the way the market is, I know, we're going to need to put our order in for the new ones well in advance, so we actually don't need them. So we're getting, getting down to about, um, four, four and a half months from now, and we'll have to turn these over with myself. And you, you really haven't even surplus those trucks yet, but, um, I believe that can be done later.
Soon as motion is approved, proceed accordingly, not the surplus.
This is, well, not that, we don't, you've already approved that, the due, the budget, but this is just to approve the, the proposal. Auction guarantee for the next spring. And this, and this can roll down. It doesn't have to be done tonight. So we'll, we'll turn business, and that's what you want to do.
I have a question for you all this, when I was reading this paper. Uh, the location dates said March sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty. That should be twenty twenty-two, shouldn't it?
You are correct. That is a typo. I'm sorry. I'll give you a fix.
Okay.
I don't forget it, though. That's another proposal, but, uh, I see exactly what you're looking at, man.
Are you going to be able to get trucks in there?
You think I'm old? She got it.
We've been told about it, uh, the new, uh, new thing. What else? Um, that is all under, under current business, uh, we do have, um, let me try to say it here. We have our ER bridge projects, which I think, I don't know if McKenzie's planning on bringing that up in her report or not, but we do have, um, proposals for the loans that we need to kind of blow pavements on those projects. And then the other item there, I'm not sure I've had a chance to speak with Malon yet, so I'm not sure if he has some important on yet. I'm writing a question.
We, we, I mean, it's, you definitely remember, it was expounding that a building, Troy Bank had a full hose, a board laid on someone's dwelling, and they have a contractor to sell it. And in doing that, the buyer obtained a survey, and it was discovered that just a little corner, a triangle of the building is sitting over on the roadway. And I don't know what road it is, Russell.
Eleven seventy-four was in the area.
It's in that big area. Yes, we got a big area. So Mike has obtained a survey of, of the area that is the encroachment, so that if the county commission approved, then the county can be, county can do what we've done before in situations like this. There haven't been many, but there are somewhere. Years ago, somebody built a house or lived in a house or something, it's sitting on the roadway, we kind of let them record it. Nobody's going to go tear down the buildings up. But that's something we can do if, if the roadway's not needed, that little corner is to quick clean it away, because we don't want a lot of building anyway with that house sitting on it. And two, it provides for the, for the citizens, they can get clear titles to their land and house. So again, there's precedent for this. We've done it, and I would, I was, we, we, no reason not to. I would recommend we do that again on this one. Uh, that little triangle, I, I can't, they didn't tell me.
I don't think I had sent it to you, though. They must have sent it.
Their victim drawing, yes.
Well, it's not, it's not but a few feet in, in couples, so, um. I recommend that, I mean, someday my recommendation, I, I can't fair to recommend that we authorize chairman to sign a quick plane deed conveying this little portion of the roadway, which still leaves, Russell, as you mentioned, a large area right there. It's not, it's not squeezing the roadway at all.
What else? Questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Have y'all been back at Shellhorn, done any work since, uh, the river, Bigfield Station Two is going to go, since we talked? Y'all had any vagueness, survey, and even on any of that?
We have not, um, right now, the next, uh, action step is to, um, I send a notice of registration to you to get the pit registered.
Um, they asked me to meet them out there tomorrow, evening late before dawn. So when you see that y'all have a minute to shoot, do the survey, and you were going to do all that? He's, I believe he has property line that we're worried about, and then.
Probably still...
Yes, sir. After I meet them tomorrow, I can get a better idea of what potential timeline they're working on, and I'll get back with you so we can, we can all get this done.
What else we got? You got it? Do you have anything, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nothing that requires any action tonight. We've been looking at several grant programs, Russell, on that last week. I mentioned people asking about the grant for possibly looking at some of the roads and bridges. However, we've gone back and looked and researched this, we don't think it's worth our time, and I don't think that funding is highly populated metropolitan areas. On the last grant cycle, they funded one grant out of town, the rest come off, and so metropolitan areas, so we decided to put our emphasis on the hazard mitigation line, there are two hazard mitigation grants out now. We have already submitted our letter of intent to the district, in fact, several meetings ago, for the first one, that includes the two shelters, the individual shelters, managed credit, and some traffic barriers. We have about fifteen days to make any adjustments to that, if you want to make any adjustments to that. And we've also received notice of second hazard mitigation grant due to code, the entire state of Alabama, that is, we have until February, so in our letter of intent, we will be having a local emergency planning commission meeting soon to grant the authority from each of the county agencies, and we're running that back to you for, for the unapproval to submit those letters of intent of the projects. So, that's where we're at. Two other things on good news, code numbers continue to decline, thank goodness, statewide and also remotely. And the other thing is, there's still potential, since there was, means tonight, we'll have to look at it in the morning, probably send something out tomorrow, if we're still on exceeding that, we need to call it back.
Repeat the kind of, what you were saying about the hazard mitigation, managed credit and shelters.
All right. We have, until November eleven, to make any adjustments to our letter of intent. After that, what we've submitted is, we're not, you know, active really, so we can't make any changes after that. I was really asking if you want any changes, and I was thinking to do, if they don't, you know, approval from the commission last week.
And then, you have no idea on when the funding will happen or...
Not exactly, not sure. Dr. Michael Johnson and I could call them, and he says, "They've been in the process." They did extend the deadline to the last, to the first time, and that's just for relations. But I think they have the first one, you know, for the, the other one, I think the funding will be probably later this summer, sometime. Funding have until February, if I, if I'm ready to tell.
You ready? Thank you, Eric. Secretary Gordon.
We have a legal matter that involves the exception of general reputation and character, good name character, state department, to discuss, and so we'll be able to...
Okay, do that, do either of the ready to read, please, all right? Do you have anything to report this time? Mr. Gordon?
So, we had a legislative committee conference last week, next last year, the week before. So, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, that'll get some draft up, too, this could sort of be before the legislative conferences in December this year, November. I encourage everybody to can together. And it really, the only thing kind of that, you know, neck, or actually, this was twenty-eight of the, either again, the special session will start for the district, and so I guess we'll be the second special session this, this side.
Anybody here? Okay, thank you. You men have things to report?
Okay, a few things we want to know. The first item just is, we're interested in, as y'all know, we've kind of been trying to work on that, and waiting on some information about it from your counterparts with the Board of Education. If everybody's good, I think we'll try to look at doing advertising for the public hearings starting this Saturday, and shoot for the twenty-second, I believe, is the date, for the, the, twenty-second for having public hearings on that, unless any of you have any concerns with what we have so far.
So, what's happening? Do we have a vote for it?
Well, we've had it suggested to us from watching being, that when we're talking to them, to go ahead and have the public hearing probably around two o'clock that afternoon, the day of the meeting. And that way, y'all isn't considering anything that's said at the public hearing, you'll have some time before the meeting, that you'll look at voting on it that night. But that would be some time. They have suggested that we do that. And all of this will be in the public hearing notice, if this is where we, we don't, the Board of Education would meet this night, too, and such top part of the day tomorrow, to be sure if everybody's ready to vote, or don't do the public hearing now. And if they are, the council will bring down some maps and stuff, and this will always stay in the paper, from when we do the, the mass, and then public hearing, those items being in the office, so that they can come and take a look at those lines. If y'all have any more questions on that, the next item, we've got some budget revisions that we'll need to consider doing. One of these, I actually have two, but I'm going to have to forward one of them for the reappraisal to the next meeting, because we're still waiting on some more information. The other item is, it's a revision, but it's just due to the shared vehicles that were in last year's budget. As we all know, it's hard to get vehicles in, they didn't come in until October, after October one this year, and so we're really just rearranging the budget to show that expenses won't be in this year instead of in last year's budget. So, there's no real change, it was a planned expense anyway, it just will be revised the budget for that, because it is five vehicles, so it is a larger amount of money, so I'm certain to go ahead and do a budget revision on that for the arters and all of it. And that will roll down to the next meeting for current business. The one for reappraisal is one we have to do every year, we have to wait to make sure we have every bit of their income, every bit of their expenses, and we have to have an exact budget for this, which is the state, because of the way the reappraisal works, the way it's funded, so it's still waiting on one call back from somebody in the state about a grant. Once I get that, we can get that, those revisions set up, and very good if you have that. If y'all have any questions on that, the next item is a workers compensation resolution. It's in your package. What it is, is there is a bonus that they kind of reward you with, if you haven't signed a contract for five years. We did this five years ago, and it's just time to renew this contract, I mean, and continue to stay with this bonus complaint. So, that, in fact, can just roll down to the, to current business. If you have any questions, you can let me know, and I will, we'll, we'll give you some answers on that. The next item, the number four, is postage release for the revenue commission office, it's just time to renew their postage machine that's in their office. There's actually, I believe, who already told me that it's about half the price of what it has been, and so they will live across stages in there with that office. Moving on down to current business, the first item is going to be the, the communications building. If you so choose, we can go ahead and vote on that tonight, so that they can continue to move forward on that. This is, this has been in line with what we have said at the beginning, and there's no real changes for me to report, even if we're back in the thirty-five percent or whatever that we've done on this. So, if you so choose, we can go ahead and vote on that, so that they can go ahead and work on those designs. The next item is going to be the CBVG CD grant resolution. This is where we had that public hearing, I believe, last meeting, it's where we made some amendments to the budget for that CB grant from CBVG. It's just a resolution where you all are approving those changes that were suggested, and that we can submit that to the state for approval, or hopefully approval, personal money to go along with our, the, the bids that we've already done.
Is it, would it grant the outfit, that, do you need assistance?
The next item is going to be the franchise renewal contract. This is the contract with Troy Cable. We have spoken, both parties agreed to this contract, and everything's good. I know we're all aware that Troy Cable has been bought, it's kind of in the change process, but our agreement already had wording in there that, and the successors, so we don't have to worry about needing any kind of changes to the agreement, it'll still work, and work what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
There's no questions on that. I'm going to skip on down to the number six under current business, data request annual contract. This is just an annual contract for the data work software and machines that are in the jail, it's something that they've approved, so they can continue to have a legitimate annual contract machine, correct? Is what it is, got it up, for jail. This is something I've already voted in, it's just now, we have a contract to get this in. The next item is the American Rescue Fund Act. I'm going to let someone from the committee, I think one of y'all's figures, as to what's going on with that.
Commissioner, come. So, we met last time, we met with counsel, that we have a contract in the agenda tonight that we'd like to approve. So, the idea is to, to award this contract, Arington Law, it's really limited in scope, and it's basically to help us determine what part of these funds legally can come into the general fund. Be separate proposal, but the long this, we want to propose to start taking bids by our long-term legal counsel and consulting for helping us find legalities and figure out what projects that we're going to do, and what those after the remaining American Rescue Fund act amendments that are left after we move into the general fund. So, two things. One is for the short run, undiscovered, and then the one will be to stop taking bids for consulting and legal services to be, to help them out.
What else? Anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
The next item is going to be the ER bridge project, so the resolution in your package, I know a couple of weeks ago, you approved for, maybe else were also to talk today, about taking out a promissory note for one year, to kind of offset the cost of these bridge projects that we're doing, while we're waiting on reimbursement. So, this is a copy of the resolution, it's just like the other resolutions we've done before in the past, so it's got received approval on that, so that we can get this taken care of. There's no questions on that. I'm going to skip down to item ten, school resource officer agreement. This is part of what was approved in the budget with the County Board of Education and the Sheriff's Department for two school resource officers, and it's the same, it's been being in the past, same amount of money, everything. Number eleven is a contract with the CEO of Troy, this is what we've been doing annually over the end, for our E M S, you can all, they pay a portion of those, of one of those offices, so it's the same thing, it's something that's already in the budget, we'll receive approval to move forward and execute those contracts.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for our minutes, sir? Thank you, again. Our county commissioner work session will now come to a close. Our regular meeting will reconvene in five minutes, six oh five.
Don't settle for slow internet in 2020. Everything is quicker when you think Troy Cable. With our state-of-the-art internet network, you can upload and download large files quickly. You'll bid buffering farewell when you stream your favorite movies, TV shows, and music. Enjoy local...